Please rise from the Pledge of Legions. Welcome. We'll call, starting to the right, we have Trustee St. John, Trustee Jim Ju, Trustee Collins, starting on my left, Trustee Colin Warden, Trustee Ahmed Ismail, Board Counsel Mark McHenry, and I'm the Board President, Sean Cotton. I move to approve the special meeting agenda for April 17, 2024. Can I have a second? Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a concern. I noticed that public comments were moved to the end after our consideration of Freedom of Information Act appeals. So I'd like to amend the agenda so that we have public comments before we go into closed session, because I'd like to consider any arguments that are brought forth by the members of the public or the people who brought the appeals forward. If they're here and are making a public comment, I would like to hear what they have to say before we go into closed session so that we can consult with our attorney and just consider some of those arguments.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Second.
All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Can I have a motion to approve? We have the motion. All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay, the motion carries. I'm looking, I'll make a motion to permit the Board of Education consider FOIA appeals. Can I have a second?
Support.
Support by Vice President Ismail. Is there any discussion? This would be to basically suspend the current policy, which calls for a FOIA committee and allow the full board to make the decision on the FOIA appeals.
I have a question. I was like, I'm not opposed to the whole board doing it, but are we going to amend that policy to reflect that from now on, all of the FOIA appeals will be up here before the entire board?
That is something that we could do, though that is not the motion on the table.
So in the future, do you think that's something we're going to consider in the future?
We could. I think that's actually something we could consider and take to a policy committee and then bring it back here. I would not be opposed to reviewing that.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I just am a little stuck on waiting for the public comments after the consideration of the FOIA appeals, because I just don't understand why we would not want to consider. I have a lot of respect for the members of the public who are here and what they have to say.
Do you have anything relevant to the current motion on the table?
Yes, because we are considering the FOIA appeals, so I would like to know why we would want to consider what the public has to say before we make our determination. Is there a reason that the four of you voted against this? I'm wondering what the rationale is behind not hearing the public before we make our determination.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
So no one's going to answer me on that? No one's going to give me their justification for voting no on that?
No, that motion's already passed. So is there any other discussion on the FOIA appeals? No? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. The motion carries. I move to enter into closed session pursuant to Section 81H of the Open Meetings Act. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee St. John?
No.
Trustee Ju?
Yes.
Trustee Collins?
Yes.
Trustee Warden?
No.
Trustee Pappas?
Yes.
Trustee Ismail?
Yes.
And I'm a yes, so we're entering closed session. We will return. Okay, we're back in open session. I move to deny the appeal by the Detroit News of the prior decisions by the district to deny the FOIA request for the full sub-report. Have a second?
Support.
Oh, yeah. First, go ahead. Yes, thank you. That was a second by Trustee Ju. Okay. I am moving to deny the appeal based on our legal counsel and because I believe that the administration needs to rely on attorney-client privilege to receive legal advice from Board Counsel and District Counsel and rely on attorney-client privilege for such. Is there anybody who wants to speak who's opposed to the motion?
I would.
That's Trustee Warden.
Thank you. I think this is a bad decision for several reasons. I think that, first of all, for transparency reasons, I think that the district, our stakeholders, our teachers, the parents, all have the right to know what happened with this trustee, Trustee Ismail. And there's already been a number of discussions, both on the record. We had a five-hour meeting to talk about this. So many of the facts have already been released, and I think it's only fair that our community knows what actually happened here. There's been a report that was released by superintendent. There has been summaries made by numerous board members, including myself, and I think that the only way we're really going to know what happened is if the facts as reported by the person who did the investigation is released. The second reason is that we are about to enter into budget season, and we are facing shortfalls, we're facing potential cuts, and the last thing we should be spending money on is costly litigation, when all we have to do is release the report.
Yes.
I don't. In my prior legal career, before I was prosecutor, I did FOIA appeals. I represented municipalities, multiple municipalities across the metro area, and I know these can be costly. Going to court's costly, writing briefs is costly, and it seems like the law doesn't seem to favor us. I know that courts always favor disclosure, and if there's no clear cut, and I mean, having done the research myself and having lost appeals myself when I represented municipalities, the law and judges almost always favor disclosure unless it's clear cut. So based upon the FOIA appeals that I read by the Detroit News and the Tower, it seems like the law is not clear cut, and in that case, I think a judge would favor disclosing the report. The other thing I want to say is that we have waived this privilege before. So just a few short months ago, there was an opinion that regarding Mr. Ismail's Photoshop business and his work with the district, he was being paid by the district, and this board majority was all too happy to release that privileged report when it favored Mr. Ismail. So I don't understand why at this juncture, we're jumping on attorney-client privileged manwagon and saying, well, you know, we're not going to do it here. So, and I know this is not the only time we've released attorney-client privileged documents. You know, over the years that I've been a trustee, there have been other times when we've waived that privilege. So for those three reasons, I think that we should release the report. I spent a long time when this report came out, when all of the family of Norths came to the meeting to talk about releasing the report, and I stand by that position. The only other thing I want to say is I want to give a really big shout out to the Rose Point South Journalism Department as well as the Tower. The FOIA request was just brilliant, and I know that we're doing something right in this school, our teachers are doing something right, because these kids in this program, the Tower, are just phenomenal and brilliant, and I want to really give a shout out to them for taking the initiative and writing very well-written FOIA requests in the law that they cite as creative, and that's what, they are going to be excellent future journalists. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone who stands in support of the motion? Who would like to speak? No? Anyone else against?
Say something.
Trustee St. John?
Yeah, I thought it was interesting that you said you'd like to deny the appeal because administration needs to rely on attorney-client privilege for legal advice, but in this case, the client is the board, and we actually had some administrators who were alleging victims of the unfair treatment that is part of this investigation. So it's not the administration that needs to rely on legal advice here. And meanwhile, the board, none of the board members supposedly have read the report, even though we are supposedly the client in this attorney-client privilege, so I don't think that makes sense. I think Trustee Warden, being a practicing lawyer for many years, made a lot of good points that I don't need to reiterate, but I just wanted to say that we keep saying a support, that we want to move on from this issue. And I don't think we can move on from the issue if it starts getting dragged out in the courts and we keep harping on it and having, spending money on it in a court case. I think it's impossible to move on from it, and it's only going to cause further division in our community. Whereas if we release the report and let people read it, and Trustee Ismail has said he's done nothing wrong, so people can read that for themselves in the report, if that's the case, then we can finally actually move on, which we would all like to do, and get to the important business of making sure that our school is the best it can be for our students.
So that is not what this report was given to the administration to make a decision on, and the administration relied on that report to make a decision. So it was legal opinion, it was a legal opinion given to the administration. Yes, the district represented by the board holds the privilege, but the administration is the one that day-to-day works with attorneys, and should that privilege be waived, it's them who could have their privilege waived by merely mentioning having legal opinions. And so for me, that is why I'm voting to deny this appeal. Is there anyone else who needs to speak? All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Collins?
Are we voting in the affirmative?
We're voting in the affirmative to deny the appeal.
Yes.
Trustee Ju?
Yes.
Trustee Warden?
No.
Trustee St. John?
No.
Trustee Pappas?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So the motion carries. Second, I move to deny the appeal by the South Tower paper of the prior decisions by the district to deny the FOIA request for the full sub-report. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Pappas. And I am making this motion for the same reasons, so that the administration can rely on legal counsel without having to waive privilege by mentioning opinions given to them by legal counsel. Is there any discussion?
I have one more comment.
Yes.
Just sort of further what I was saying about the Tower's FOIA request, they list a number of reasons, and what concerns me is, you know, the court only needs one reason to overturn this board's decision. And so it seems that in addition to all of the reasons, the good reason that the Detroit News gave, there's five, there's four other reasons that they list, and I think that it seems to me that if there's a favor of disclosure, which there is in FOIA requests, a judge is probably going to latch on to one of these reasons. And so again, it seems inevitable if we go to court, and I don't think that Detroit News is just going to let us go, instead of costing the district thousands of dollars to go to court, we should just release it. And I, again, I'd like to compliment the South, the Tower, for writing this well-written summary, which states multiple reasons why it's not something that should be denied by FOIA.
Is there any other discussion?
I have one more comment as well. Just the fact that the claim that because if we release this report, that administration would not be able to rely on attorney-client privilege, I would never argue that we should release a report that administration required attorney-client privilege to rely on advice for, but this report specifically was, as anyone could have read the executive summary, was that the administration could not do anything, because we're trustees and we need to be held accountable at the ballot box. And not only does keeping this report confidential ensure that you can't really hold us accountable at the ballot box because you don't know what happened, but it also, it doesn't affect what the administration was or was not able to do. So for that reason, I do think, I think the Tower made some really good points in their FOIA request. I think it's really impressive that we have student newspapers that are willing to put in all that work and get good practice for their future as professional journalists. And yes, like Trustee Warden, I'm also very concerned about the cost of this court case when we don't have money in the budget to spare. We've talked a lot about how much it's going to, how much we're going to have to cut from the budget in the coming year, and we don't need to be spending more on legal fees, we 've already spent hundreds of forty thousand on this case alone, so I can only imagine how much court fees would add to that. I would really urge a reconsideration so that we can just release the report instead of waiting for an inevitable forced release from the courts in a few months if the same result is likely to happen anyway, as Trustee Warden believes, having fought a lot of these cases already.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Collins?
Again, in the affirmative.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Ju?
Yes.
Trustee Warden?
No.
Trustee St. John?
No.
Trustee Pappas?
Yes.
I'm a yes, the motion carries. Moving on to public comment. First up is Christine Jacobs, followed by an reassignment. Keep the time.
Good evening.
So you have three minutes. Please state your name and your city of residence.
Thanks. My name is Christine Jacobs. I'm a resident of Rose Point Farms. I'm wearing this Tower t-shirt. It dates back from 1996. I'm sure you how old I am. It says before you now to express my solidarity with the journalism students who filed the initial FOIA and saw an appeal today. I'm also restating my appreciation for the Detroit News filing an appeal as well. It's so hard to see our Metro Daily cover this important issue. Today's a really big day. This appeal is really big. It's actually a first for the Tower. As I said, I myself am a Tower alum. I was an editor on the news staff for several years in what we called the Erdomi years. We were very first class after Mr. Button had retired. The Tower is far and away my most cherished high school experience, and I'm so gratified to see this institution continue to teach students real-life journalism and ethics lessons. I would like to offer special kudos to Caitlin Edmonton, who's the advisor who's continuing the traditions of Mr. Button, who's an Erdomi, to always challenge authority and stand up for journalism, practice, and principles. I'd also like to say what happened here today is unfortunate, albeit expected, but it continues to be a good lesson for our kids. The fight continues, and it's also worth pressing on the truth of democracy or its state. And I imagine we will be seeing more of this, and that there will actually be litigation, and these young students will be joining it. I'm going to end with a quote from Mr. Button. For folks who don't know, he is a world-class journalism teacher. He's one of the few that was ever admitted as a high school advisor into the Journalism Hall of Fame. He is a legend here in Rose Point. He said, quote, "In my view, journalism is one of the most productive, rewarding classes that a school can offer, because it is so much more than just a class." There's a rule or approach I like about education. It says that a person is on the first level of education when they can pass the test. They're at the second level when they understand what they have learned. They're at the third level when they can do what they've learned. The fourth level is when they can teach what they have learned. From my perspective, that means everyone who works at the Tower is at the third level of educational success, because they're using what they're learning. If they stay for three years, they're teaching younger students, so it goes way beyond a regular educational opportunity. Thank you.
Next up, Maria Simon, wrapping up the decision.
Hello, my comments were before you changed the comment section before you went in into your meeting. My name is Maria Simon. I'm a Rose Point farmer. As an active grandparent of students in GPPSS, I spoke at the February meeting with a simple message: Release the report. And here we are, still waiting, and now with newspapers, including one of our own student newspapers, appealing their denied FOIA request for the report. You have an important decision to make, and one you should not take lightly. The harder you fight to keep the community in the dark about all of this, the more questions we have. One question is, why was taxpayer money spent to represent President Ismail in this investigation? The investigating attorney found Ahmed not only had a plan or desire to push out outstanding administrators, but also retaliated against them after they filed complaints. Why was money spent to represent a board member in this? Did Kate and Michelle also have the benefit of legal representation paid for by the district? And how much of the very large, the last check register showed fifty thousand dollars paid to Collins and Blaha lawyers? How much of that is it thirty-some thousand that we heard at the last meeting that has been spent to defend Ahmed so far? We watched as this board appeared to push out John Dean. Pushing out folks seems possible to me, based on what I have seen. Whatever anyone thinks of Dean, he was not the kind of man to randomly resign right before the school year started. This board likes to claim physical responsibility while running through taxpayer dollars. Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars payout to Dean while paying Fenton two and now legal fees to defend Ahmed. How much will fighting this FOIA-appealing court cost the taxpayers? How much will your attempts to cover up what is in that report cost us? In February, we heard a disturbing comment that was not only racist, but also raised big concerns about your plans for North High School. What are those plans? Is that all in the report, and is that why you refuse to simply release the report? Kate and Michelle deserve to know. The students, teachers, and parents at North deserve to know. Why are you fighting so hard to keep things secret and hidden? I wonder how you could even decide to keep something hidden when you have not even read it? Based on what has been stated, no one on this board or an administration has even read the report. How do we ensure that the district is doing right by employees and the community at large if no one even knows what happened? Again, this comment was before you went in. Release the report.
And then, on your behalf?
Hi, Wendy Solomon, Rose Point Farms. First, let me say I'm disappointed that this meeting was scheduled for 4:30, making it difficult for people to attend who work or have after-school activities to manage for their kids. Even more disappointing is that the agenda was changed, moving public comment to after the board made its decision, where just a day or two ago, it was on the agenda as occurring before. Seems to signal that the board is simply not interested in public input. I'm asking you to change your mind, stop the angst in the community, stop the racking up of legal fees, and release the report. Change your mind. As the editorial board of the Tower stated, without clarity and the release of the documents, knowing who to vote for in the next school board election will become more difficult to navigate because of a lack of transparency. To say that those, to say what those students said differently, the public needs complete information to determine if we should continue to support the trustee involved and the rest of the board, all of whom now have cast votes as to whether the report should be released. Five members of the board are willing to accept interim superintendent's determination that there was no retaliation, but rather simple miscommunication. A former athletic director and two North administrators and the outside investigator did not interpret the trustee's words as simple miscommunication. Why should the interim superintendent's determination take precedent? A person with a longstanding relationship with Trustee Ismail, a person recruited to the interim position by Trustee Ismail, a person who did not sit in on the interviews, a person who, like many others in a position of authority, may fail to understand the impact of a trustee's words on those over which the trustee has budget authority. One final point, confidentiality of the interviewees. The public knows at least four of the eight that were interviewed, probably knows another couple. So if confidentiality is really the concern, which is what the interim superintendent said, can't you redact names and titles and a bit of other information? So let's not cause any more angst in the community or rack up any more fees. Be transparent, let the public be fully informed, release the report.
Ken Moprey?
I echo a lot of the statements that have been made and want to applaud both the Tower and the Detroit News for taking this on. I also, I sent a letter to the board with some case law that I thought was on point, that, hoping that it's passed along, maybe to your attorney as you take this judgment. Of course, we all know that in FOIA litigation, not only will you be paying for Rose Point's lawyers, but if you're unsuccessful, you'll also be paying the attorney's fees of anybody bringing the case, which is a significant thing to think about, especially when you have a major newspaper who likely has very good counsel taking this on. I do want to just quote one case, and it's actually in the FOIA handbook by the Attorney General. It's Harold Company versus Ann Arbor Public Schools. It's a 1997 case. For those that want a citation, it's 224 Michigan App 266. And this was a case that involved a number of things, but I just wanted to read a quick quote from it. It's related to whether the court will allow FOIA out of an interview recorded and noted. Here, the interview was at Sariel. Its stated purpose was to get Gilliam's version of events, not to address how the school was going to defend itself in a potential lawsuit. Accordingly, the attorney-client privilege did not apply. I would argue that the independent investigation was not to give the school board advice on how to handle a litigation, but instead it was an investigation of the facts. Even if there is legal advice within that report, redaction is an absolutely viable alternative to redact facts that are, that are attorney-client privilege that haven't already been waived within the other reports that have been released. I'll also say this, in just sheer fairness, you have allowed one of the subjects of this investigation, trustee Ismail, to, to basically sit on his platform and give his version of what happened, apologize to his knowledge, and communicate what he thought was misunderstandings. And yet there are two administrators in our school that have worked tirelessly in their building since September through the stress of bringing this, this investigation, and they have no voice in this. They can't even see what was investigated. They subjected themselves to independent investigation and have no access to it. Despicable. Really despicable.
Despicable.
Anyway, I urge you to reconsider this, this, this decision. Release the report. It's simple. Thank you.
Then, Zica Bupnichero?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ken Moprey. I'm a resident of the Woods. I take, I agree with what my colleagues have said about this, but I would apply another word and another concept to it. And this is happening all across the country. I think it's time to lift the veil on the incompetence and the lack of capability. This is symptomatic of institutions across all fields that have weaponized incompetence to frustrate scrutiny and fiscal responsibility. Recent examples abound. The LAPD and OJ, which has been in the news again, Boeing claims falling out of the sky, Fox News lying and getting sued for three-quarters of a billion dollars, and the mother of all incompetence sitting in a courtroom in Manhattan falling asleep. Where is the accountability of this board? The community has a right to ethical conduct and transparency. If you have nothing to hide, just release it. I mean, I sat here, Paul, I've lived in a lot of different communities, and I admit I'm a product of harsh prep schools on the East Coast. I have never seen behavior like this in any community I've ever lived in, and I find it appalling. You know, there will be a reckoning and accountability, and, you know, it's a democracy, and come election time, I think it'll... election time, I think it'll swing the right way to ethical people and honest people and decent people replacing the majority of this board.
Hi there, my name is pronounced Blaikizap Boatilly Nero. I live in the Woods. Are the students from South here? Any students from South with the Tower? Hi, I'm talking to you, most importantly. So a couple of things. I think the bulk of you on the board are also not original Rosepointers, aside from, I think trustee, um, Ahmed Ismail, is that correct? Yes, no, you cannot, original folks or not? Okay. I suggest you read, if you haven't, a thesis from nineteen fifty-three that was written by a future superintendent, James William Busham. This is available at the Rosepoint Historical Society, along with the superintendent's office in the Central Library. It is a three-hundred-and-fifty-five-page thesis on the history of our town and the school district. Each one of you on this board should read this thesis, because history is repeating itself right now. I come to you after talking to my fourteen-year-old daughter, an eighth grader here at Brown Al, the future Norseman. She asked, "What happened with the report?" So as neutrally as possible as a mother, I said, "Well, this happened, then this happened." So she said, "Okay, what did trustee Ismail say?" I said, "He said this." She said, "What about the other side?" I don't know, Lily, because they won't release the report. So she said to me, "So we're just listening to one person's point of view?" Yes, we are, Lily. And you know what else? If we read the history of the Rosepoint school system, we are repeating history. One of the downfalls of the bond not closing in nineteen forty-nine was because the vitriolic reporting of not only the Rosepoint news, but the way in which the South side of the district did not respect the North side. In nineteen thirty-nine to nineteen forty-two, there was an explosion of population on the North side. The South side didn't want to put buildings on the North side, they wanted to bus kids down here. History is repeating itself. Most importantly, the superintendent at that time saying the bond did not pass was because the business of the board was being done by committees. History is repeating itself. It has been the thesis. As trustees and the president, sir, you all should read this report and understand where we come from, because if we don't know where we come from, we don't know where we're going. And the South and the North divide has been there for a long, long time. You are making it worse by not releasing the report. Ahmed, we come from a similar point of the world, and our families are similar in culture. This would not fly in my household with my parents or your grandparents. This is not right, sir, you know it.
Thank you for coming today, we are adjourned.